The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Larry Hudkins, currently serving as Chair of Lancaster County Board, and to my immediate right is Brent Smoyer, Vice Chair, Deb Shore, and Jane Raybold is not with us this morning, and Roma Amundson is our other Commissioner. We hope that all of you took time to vote and will take time to vote today, and we want to add our best wishes to Mr. Smoyer in his race and Deb in your race, even though you're unopposed.
Must be nice.
And Jane Raybold in her race. So, Election Day, that's something we should all participate in, and it's a privilege to vote in this country, and we need to do it. This morning, Richard Graybold served as our Deputy County Attorney as legal advisor to the County Board this morning. Angela Zokol, and I am going to mention it this time, although we might mention a little something later, this is going to be her last meeting with us. She has received her promotion, and she'll be going to work for the county engineer. So Angela, we want to publicly say thank you for your service. And to begin the agenda this morning, our county clerk, Dan Noldy, and Dan's also running unopposed, so congratulations to Dan.
Copy Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Initially, copy of all material to be discussed in today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one, or minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, October 28, 2014.
Move approval.
Second.
Are there additions or corrections? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion for zero. One B is approval of the minutes to the one and six-year road and bridge meeting held on Tuesday, October 28, 2014.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? We had an excellent turnout for the one and six-year hearing the other night. I think probably the biggest crowd that I've seen in 25 years, so it's good to see people participating in government. No further discussion, call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are claims or approval of all claims processed through Tuesday, November 4, 2014.
Move approval of all claims.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is special presentations, recognition of Gary Bergman, Extension Educator for service to Lancaster County.
And I think county clerk has something that he wants to read, and Gary, if you'll come up, I'm going to do this one myself and turn over the chair to Vice Chair Brent Smoyer.
Extension Educator Gary Bergman is retiring after nearly 20 years with University of Nebraska Lincoln Extension in Lancaster County. As unit leader, Gary provided leadership for Extension's programs in Lancaster County. Locally, Extension is a partnership between UNL and Lancaster County. Through the years, Gary worked with the Lancaster County Commissioners and UNL Southeast District Director to link UNL and county staff, budgets, and resources into one team. Gary networked with Extension Board, community leaders, stakeholders, program partners, and elected officials to identify program needs. He hired, trained, and supervised staff, helping develop and evaluate programs. He also secured funds and resources for programs such as solid waste education, embryology, school enrichment, and a million-dollar childhood obesity grant. A strong advocate for positive youth development, 4-H reached over 20,000 Lancaster County youth annually during Gary's tenure. He chaired the committee that developed the Nebraska Diamond Clover Recognition Program and served on building committee for the Lancaster Event Center. In addition, Gary oversaw and promoted the Lancaster Extension Education Center's facilities, which include conference rooms used by nonprofit and governmental organizations. A servant leader, Gary empowered Extension staff to succeed as individuals while fostering teamwork. He led by example and often gave hands-on help, especially with the 4-H program. He continuously encouraged and provided resources for Extension's use of new technologies to engage the public. On behalf of the Extension staff, we will miss Gary's leadership and contributions. He takes to heart the land-grant university system's mission of working with the people they serve. Prior to Extension, Gary directed the Nebraska Lead Agricultural Leadership Program for eight years.
Gary, congratulations. On behalf of the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners, we want to present you with this plaque commemorating your 19 years, which is almost 20, of service to the citizens of Lancaster County. And I first became acquainted with you in all about 1980. We both served on, Gary was a coordinator for the Department of Education, agricultural education, and we hosted the National Young Farmers Tour in Omaha.
Yes.
And all I can remember is we hit a nice storm, and we had 33 buses on farm tours that next morning, and to get out of the Holiday Inn, we had to hold hands and usher the people out to 72nd Street to go to Exarban that night to see holiday on ice. How ironic.
Exactly.
But Gary, you've been a tremendous inspiration to Extension. You've served it very well, first as a Voag teacher, and then with State Department of Education, and then nearly 20 years of service here for us in Lancaster County. A lot of people find it hard to believe that there's 20,000 kids in Lancaster County that have exposure to 4H, and what a wonderful investment, and those students that grow up to be taxpayers instead of people on the other end of the stick. And we have very little trouble with the kids that are involved, and you found a way and your staff here to find things of interest to them, no matter if it's gerbils, hamsters, a cow, model rocketry, or photography, you found something for them to get an interest in. Like to have you say a couple of words and then introduce your friends.
Well, Larry, thank you very much. It's been an incredible almost 20 years, serving Lancaster County, representing the University of Nebraska. And I want to say to the Commissioners, you've earned my respect because you deal with a lot of decisions that are important, and you, in my observation, have always tried to do the very best you can for the residents of Lancaster County, and I appreciate that very much, as well as the support that you've provided to my agency as well as all the others. Really important. We're going to be in good hands here, because if, with your permission, I'd like to introduce my interim, and that is Karen Wilbig. If she could come forward. She's been with Extension for 15 years, Lancaster County. She's been the supervisor of the Nutrition Education Program, often referred to as NEP Program, and it's an excellent program, serves tremendous needs here in Lancaster.
Take a minute to tell them what they do.
Well, I should defer that, but Karen would be glad to do that because it's very important work.
Sure. The Nutrition Education Program is a national program funded by USDA, and we basically serve limited resource or limited income families. So there are, there's definite income guidelines to whom we serve, and we work in the school system with 20 elementary schools and about five middle schools, all of them qualifying because they have an X number of, you know, participation in the school lunch program. So it's, there's a need in Lincoln, even though sometimes that isn't always out there in the public eye. But we serve a lot of people, over 7,000 kids a year go through our program, and about 400 or 500 adults that we work with to try to help them have healthier lives, so.
And so I said you're in good hands. We are in good hands with the leadership of Karen. Here's replacement and interim person for Lancaster County Extension. Also, I'd like to recognize the staff, and they are, they have earned my respect as well. They're very talented, dedicated to this community and to our agency.
With the staff, please, stand.
Yes. And I must say, all of them aren't here because a lot of them are working.
Working, you bet. Let's give them all a big hand, and Gary.
We've got 30, sometimes more, in that office, coming and going, running around this community, delivering programs and doing good things, I believe. So, thank you so much. It's been my delight to work here in Lancaster County and serve the residents of this community.
Well, Gary, we thank you, and one of the things that always kind of surprised me, in fact, you and I had conversations about it because I thought sometimes you were too good-hearted. When we asked for a budget cut in the final, trying to put a budget together, Gary, whatever we asked him for, if it was 8% or 5%, he always complied, sometimes even a little over, and I always admired that, Gary.
It wasn't always easy.
I know it wasn't, especially when he had a leaky roof on some of those years.
That's exactly right.
Commissioner Shore?
Gary, I just want to thank you for your kindness many years ago when I was first campaigning and I came out to meet with you so you could explain County Extension to me. And when I hear elected officials or department directors say, "Well, you know, my budget's really complicated," I'm like, "No. Nobody's budget is complicated as Gary's because of the university funding source, the property tax funding source, the state, the federal grants," and so I'll remember your kindness for that. I will remember your ability to obtain and recruit wonderful people.
Yes.
They are just amazing, really the cream of the crop, their dedication, and then also your outreach efforts, the changes we've seen in the NEB line and the programming available, as well as the website, and how the hits keep going up every single year. So, thank you for your service, and particularly in those areas, it meant so much to me.
Thank you for your kind words.
Commissioner Amundson?
Gary, I did exactly the same thing as what Deb did. I came out and talked to you about what was going on. The one thing that I really wanted to say to you, as well as to your staff, that I really, really, I'm a farm girl, you know, and I really appreciate the passion that you've had in dealing with the 4-H people. I mean, that's really super. And, you know, we're carrying that out, you know, in accordance with Lancaster Event Center and everything like this. So thank you, and thank you all for everything you do for our kids.
Yes. We want to build citizens, good citizens, for this community, and that's the intent there.
And Gary, I want to thank you for your steadfast support of the Lancaster County Event Center. From the get-go, you were a building block there. You said we needed it, the youth needed it, the community needed it, and hard decisions, and you were involved in every one of them, so thank you.
And I'm still glad we have it because, you know, safe here is now at Grand Island, and it would have been a tremendous loss for us had we not started early.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you bet. Thank you. Enjoy your retirement.
Next is Presentation of County Corrections 2013 Employee of the Year Award to Brad Johnson, Corrections Transition Coordinator.
Good morning. I have Brad here to, you know, introduce him, but you've worked with him a lot since we broke ground in 2009, and we're here to do two things. One is honor him as exceptional, you know, as Employee of the Year, and then to have you award the Exceptional Circumstance Award. But I would like to give you a little bit about, I don't know if you want to read, or shall I go ahead and just?
However you want.
Okay, go ahead and read the nomination by many of the staff that the clerk will read.
Brad Johnson was nominated for Employee of the Year for his performance as the Department's Transition Coordinator. Over the course of the year, and many years, Brad has been the coordinator of the construction activities and development of post-orders, procedures, and policies for the new adult detention facility. Brad has also ensured that staff were trained to operate the new facility and that inmates under the custody department were transferred from the LCF Air Park Facility and the downtown adult detention facilities safely and securely. After the new facility opened, Brad continued to work on issues that surrounded the opening of a new facility involving equipment and policies and procedures that needed updating to improve the operational facility and efficiency. Having worked closely with Brad on many of these projects, I know he put in many long hours and sure success. Even though there is still transition work to be done, I believe his performance and leadership over the course of the past year make him deserve this honor. We can only imagine all the work that was involved in the huge process of moving and transitioning from the downtown facility to the new one. Meeting with contractors, understanding contractors, organizing people, and moves made the move to the new facility a success. Brad and his crew did an excellent job with a tremendous undertaking. As with this nomination, we heartily feel that Brad Johnson, Transition Coordinator, was the Lancaster County Department of Corrections' Employee of the Year.
I'd like to thank Terry Wright and Ken Prey, who put in the nominations for this, as staff here, and we have many of the staff that are with us today, but to tell you a little bit more about Brad. Brad started with the department in 1992, started as an on-call officer, correctional officer. '94, he was promoted to sergeant. '97, he worked, he was promoted to lieutenant. He's worked at both of the facilities, remember, Air Park and Downtown, at both of those facilities, and was also our transport lieutenant. And then in 2009, Brad was selected, as we broke ground, to be our transition coordinator to move us from downtown and from the Air Park Facility into one. Brad is a lifelong Nebraskan and a Southeast High graduate. He did inform me after the loss of, you know, the LPS schools that he was a 4.0 student at high school, so I don't know if we're going to be able to look that up or not. He didn't mention that until after the loss of records, but we had a good time with that. You know, as a clerk read, you know, transition regarding the scenarios, Brad was selecting over 20 committees to help work with those scenario developments of what we do day in, day out, and every hour, so we can plan for that facility as well as staffing and where we could work on that. So everything in transition kind of reverts to how we're going to operate a correctional facility. He worked with the RFP developments for equipment. I know Deb sat on one, with just even the furniture and how long that took to actually get the right bid, be able to point the building appropriately, and keeping cost containment as well. He was also, Brad was also the project contact for anything that we needed to get done in the regards from plumbing to issues with doors, to issues with how we're going to work with our fingerprint system, to cameras, visitation. It all had some way touched on transition coordination. I think staff have recognized his leadership. You've honored some of the staff on the Transition Coordinator earlier in the year, and Brad was a kingpin that really pulled that together, and with a lot of help from staff, he made this actually happen. We just celebrated our one year in the first of October into September, being in there totally and having both facilities into one. We appreciate that. Brad's wife Lori is here, 23 years. He has three sons, Cameron is UNL freshman, Connor, a sophomore at Norris High School, and Colton is seventh grader at the Norris Middle School. Brad's real active with his church as well as his son's activities. He's an avid camper and hunter. He actually is a treasurer for the Hickman Boy Scouts and was one of the adult leaders that led the 12-day, 82-mile hike in Belmont down in New Mexico this last summer. So I appreciate the effort because I don't think I could have done that. He's also working right now with his church on the sixth and seventh grade boys through their confirmation process. So I wanted to take this opportunity to give him the Employee of the Year plaque, something we've done for many years. So Brad, on behalf of the department, staff here, your wife Lori presents you this plaque for Employee of the Year. Thanks a lot.
I just have a few quick words. About five years ago, Mike took a chance in giving me this opportunity in coordinating this facility we have today. It was a great challenge, great opportunity, and I appreciate Mike's faith in giving me that chance. Although I was the official coordinator, this was a team effort, and like Mike mentioned, some have been recognized officially, but there were many, many staff members behind the scenes that made this happen, so we don't want to forget their efforts, and I really appreciate the staff that we have, so. And I guess lastly, I wanted to thank the Board for supporting this project. Of course, nobody wants to bill the jail, but it took force and courage on this Board's part to make this happen and see it through to the end, and I really appreciate that, so thanks to everybody.
Well, Commissioner Shore?
Brad, I want to extend my congratulations to you as well. You said that Brad went to this position when we broke ground. I think it was even before that, you started talking to the Board about, "We need a transition coordinator." I'm like, "What are we transitioning?" And I'm like, "It's a little early." But you kept talking to us, and you said, "I have someone in mind," and then Brad became a regular face to us on the Board. And throughout that process, I had no idea the complexities that we would be undertaking. But I think one of the strongest things we did was the open house. I still hear from people that had the opportunity to tour or spend the night, and the, you know, to the extreme amount of work that your team went to to provide that to the public was just a great opportunity, and I appreciate all that you've done for us.
And Commissioner Shore is extremely proud that she can tell her future generations that she spent a night in jail without being convicted.
I did.
Well, Brad, I too want to offer congratulations on behalf of the whole Board. We're extremely happy and pleased with the performance and your innovative ideas. Commissioner Hare and I spent many a day over across the street in the NEBCO Building. This guy actually got out chalk and tape and did the layouts of different buildings and different rooms, and we studied things, and we made many changes. You can change that tape and that chalk a lot of times, but we have a better facility today because you cared enough to actually point out things and to look at it. And then, like you said, it was a group effort. The more we talked about this, the more we studied it, the better product that we had, so thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Let's give this guy a hand. Thank you.
I guess now we go to new business end for the 4A.
That's right. We need to award the cash.
Yeah, the important thing.
4A is Exceptional Circumstance Award for $500 to Brad Johnson, County Corrections.
Move approval.
Discussion, call the roll, please.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next is a recommendation from the county engineer in purchasing to award bids to Buell Trucking and Westover Rock and Sand for the 2015 supply and hauling of crushed rock surface cores material in a total amount of $729,152.50.
Engineer Pam Dingman, three quarters of a million dollars. Let's tell the public why we need it.
Well, you know, this is the rock that we go ahead and we put on the roads every year. So some of this with rock, and so there's a difference between rock and gravel, and it's gradation and the size. So Commissioner Amundson, as you know, on Pine Lake, we put down rock first because it wears and it creates a really solid base for our, what we refer to as our gravel roads or our non-paved surfaces. This is our annual commodity of rock. This year, we did use a lot of rock because we had the number of flooding events and weather events that washed over the road, and, you know, once we get that wash over the road, we got to put that rock back down. And so we are looking at the quantities of our rocks in all of our piles, as you have requested, Commissioner Hudkins. I will assure you that we don't have any pile that is a million-dollar pile. When you look at this quantity of rock that we're getting, we did bid this a little different, and I had talked to you about how we were looking at a number of ways to where we could get some cost efficiency in the bidding process. This number is up about 2.3% per ton of haul of what last year, so I don't know whether changing the bidding system, it doesn't appear as though it made any difference. I would have expected an increase of 2% to 3% just because of, you know, current conditions, so are there any other questions?
Well, just that some people may not understand why we stockpile rock, and those of us have been through it years before, when you really, tell them why.
Sure. So, you know, I get that question, why do you have all of our assets sitting in a pile? And the reality is, if we were to go and get the rock as we needed it, it would be much more expensive, and quite frankly, it may not be available at the quantities in which we need it. And so it's much more efficient for the taxpayer if we gather that rock up and we go ahead and we take it to those piles once a year under one contract versus going and picking up when we need it.
There have been times in the past when we needed additional rock in March and April and couldn't get it because they can't produce enough of it, and so you stockpile it at times when it's the most efficient, the cheapest prices, and then you have it when you need it. So, thanks again for taking a fresh look at this process and trying to always get us the best deal that you can, and that's kind of where inflation seems to be in that 2% to 3%.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Move in seconded. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. C is an amendment to County Contract C-11-745 with Endpoint Technologies, Inc. for commercial off-the-shelf software and related services, amendment news agreement for an additional one-year term from June 3, 2014 to June 2, 2015.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 4D is an amendment to County Contract C-11-709 with the Nebraska Occupational Health Center for the annual requirements of occupational health services. Amendment renews the contract for a one-year term from December 6, 2014 to December 5, 2015.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. E is an amendment to County Contract C-12-707 with Hub Central Access Point for operations of the project higher reentry program. The amendment extends the end date of the contract to September 30, 2014 to coincide with the extension of the grant.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. F is an agreement with Capish North America Services, Inc. for professional trim telephonic consultation services. The county will pay at the rate of $200 per hour up to a total amount of $5,000 for the services. Term of the agreement is October 1, 2014 to September 30, 2015.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 4G is an agreement with TriZetto Provider Solutions for Electronic Claims Processing for the Mental Health Crisis Center.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. H has a Medicare enrollment application for institutional providers for the Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Center.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. I is a political subdivision tort claim filed against Lancaster County Corrections by Michael House for $11.70.
Based on the recommendation of the Director of Corrections, I move we deny.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 4J is a political subdivision tort claim filed against Lancaster Corrections by Samir Ali for $40.
Based on the recommendation of the Director of Corrections, I move we deny.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. K is a political subdivision tort claim filed against Lancaster County Corrections by Jason Mueller for $75,000.
Based on the recommendation of the Director of Corrections, I move we deny.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer? Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. L is reapportment of Deb Shore to the District Energy Corporation Board of Directors for a two-year term from January 1, 2015 to December 31, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Appreciate the opportunity to serve. It's a very exciting time for District Energy as we kind of move into a new focus and extending cost-efficient energy services beyond governmental doors.
It's been my pleasure to serve with Commissioner Shore on that, and in fact, we'll have a meeting at 11:30 today, a very important one, so as District Energy is the entity that serves the heating and cooling of the Lincoln Lancaster County Buildings and also do the State Capitol, State Office Building, and the Pinnacle Arena, so it's a growing organization, but it's, efficiency is what we're all about. Okay, I'm glad that Commissioner Shore is willing to serve another term on that. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number five are consent items received and placed on file the following: County Attorney Court of Deport for July through September 2014; County Treasury Report of 2013 distress warrants setting with public hearing for Tuesday, November 18, 2014 at 10:30 a.m. in Room 12 of the County City Building regarding County Tax Amendment #14012 to amend Lancaster County zoning resolution, Article 13-1 on excavation and stone milling.
Move approval.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number six, public comment, those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
Is there anyone who would wish to make public comment?
I was too sick last week, so I couldn't come see you guys.
Well, we missed you. Would you please sign in and state your name for the record?
Terri Pope Gonzalez, 349 South First Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508, 402-499-5716. I put it in writing, because I watch that everybody hands you guys something. I'm sorry, I didn't know what you were called. Are you called clerk?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this, and I give them to you now? Is that what I give them? Okay. And I didn't save one. I'll save mine from the clerk, because I didn't save one to read, okay?
If you're short, Brent and I can share.
Yeah.
That's okay, no, I have one for me.
Okay.
You know, and I'm not trying to be political with the letterhead, my brother made that for me. So this is, this is how I want to start, with five minutes, right? Okay. To whom it may concern, my name is Terri Pope Gonzalez. I'm an American born in Denver, Colorado. I'm a citizen. I'm a homeowner, a property owner in Lancaster County, Nebraska. I'm a registered voting voter with a very big loud, I wanted to put mouth, but my brother said I had to put mouthpiece. First, I'd like to address my protest that was done earlier. It was either done with this group or the Board of Equalization. It was a property tax protest. My property at 349 South First Street, First and L Streets and South First and West L Streets, it's three lots. My father-in-law took possession of the property December 1952. My husband, Marty Gonzalez, was born in this house, 349 South First Street, in April 1953. My property has been poisoned. The great leaders in this town and this state thought it was okay to put a concrete batch plant 50 feet from residential homes and right next to the Neighborhood Children's Park, Swartzkoff Park, and the crusher is on Third and Q. Okay, we're gonna leave that alone for a moment. Second, I want to go to wish all the candidates good luck. I hope they get what they want. I had a very wise grandmother whose cousin was a very, very famous general who always said, "Be careful what you wish for, you just might get it, and it's not always what it's cracked up to be, so good luck."
True.
Third, I want to address the DUI guy, and I'm so sorry I didn't know your name. I just want you to know, first, I do think you got off easy, because if you were from not my neighborhood, you wouldn't have even made, and I'm not trying to be here to get after you, you wouldn't have been able to even make the bail. This is why I want you to know why I have such a hard-on for people who drive drunk. My baby sister was killed by a drunk driver a long time ago. She was two years old. She had just started out in life. Sorry, I had no idea I was gonna get this emotional. I was three years old. I was born in June, and Sherry was born in August, so we were real close. The drunk driver had only had two drinks at a bowling alley. The accident happened over by E. Liches on 38th and Tennyson. See, E. Liches wasn't always downtown Denver, Colorado. My baby sister went through the windshield. See, back in those times, there weren't seat belts in the vehicles. The drunk driver ran a red light. There was a massive two-car accident. My older brother was five years old, he had to be cut out of the car. I don't think the fire trucks had the jaws of life then. Now this drunk driver, she ruined two families, and if you haven't guessed, the drunk driver was my mother. Those two drinks and her choice to drive cost the life of my baby sister. Her liver was cut in half. I don't know if she was cut in half, because I don't remember that. All I remember is all the blood, and the very bad choice that my mother made to drink, but not just to drink, to drink and drive. It cost my family to be ruined. My mother never got over it, neither did my father. They went to their graves, and they took that one event, that drunk driving that killed my baby sister. So I want to thank you for your time, and if you ever find yourself in that situation again, you call me. I will come, I will give you a ride wherever you want. Please do not drink and drive again. My baby sister's name was Sherry Lynn. The second one is, I addressed when I had to call the police over and over and over about those lights being off. There were 16, 17, 18 street lights off from the Harris Overpass to McDonald's. The police should have taken care of that. That's why that old man got run over, and he got run over on Robbie Painter's birthday. Robbie Painter is one of your football players. I think he's on the, I don't know, he's number 54. He comes into our neighborhood. But anyway, the contractor did not put the lights back on. It was not my job to be the one to make that road safe, but I'm not wired to where I can just look the other way. That's why I said, "Honey, I did not mean to ever call you out, okay?" So if I need to apologize.
Oh, you're okay.
You know, it just, like I said, I got to see my baby sister die. Here you go. And please do not tell anybody I had tears. Oof.
Ms. Gonzalez, that's nothing to apologize for. It is a very emotional thing, and we sympathize in your loss, even though many years ago, this board is very close to that as well, because our former county commissioner, Bob Workman, lost a daughter when a drunk driver hit her young girl out in the Waverly area, going to Waverly High School, so your comments are well-founded and...
I meant it, honey, I meant it.
It's okay.
Okay.
And also, it's just being a good citizen when the lights were out that you reported. I'm sorry that it took so long, but Public Works or somebody like that needs to be notified whenever that happens.
Well, and like I said, it was because it was, they were so rude. I really did call the police back and said, "That last punk," I did say that, "that last punk just hung up on me." I mean, I'm a property owner, I pay their wages, and I'm tired of being treated so bad. That's why on the one thing it shows, it's the Neighborhood Association. I really did, I guess I'm up to 280 votes, but at least I'm getting everybody to vote. I don't care if they vote for Mickey Mouse, just so they vote. Did you guys go vote? Go vote. Congratulations for your thing.
No, I think we are all wearing our stickers.
And actually, I did mine over, you know, where I dropped in, they don't give you a sticker when you drop in, but thank you. You know the book you said I could get? Remember you said there was a book that can kind of tell me to go, because I'd like to, and I apologize for being late. This crutch really has me where I don't have enough time to get up the stairs. Nobody knows the book you were telling me about.
Well, just stop by the offices and ask, and I'll be out there in a few minutes and we'll get it for you.
What's?
Just right next door.
One tent, just go out the door.
The double doors, sure.
And you know, and good luck whoever is going for whatever you're going for, and I'm sorry, I should know more, you know, because especially if I'm gonna get after you, I shouldn't. And Mr. Chair, I think we have some students here today. I'm gonna guess your students.
Could you tell us, is it a class project?
Yeah. University, Wesleyan, okay.
University of Nebraska.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, there's more information with regards to the agenda online that you've already looked at, as well as all of our contact information. We'd be glad to answer any additional questions or follow-ups you might have.
Do we have another gentleman wishes to make public comment?
Chair Hudkins, members of the board, for the record, Gary Aldridge, A-L-D-R-I-D-G, 7112 South 45, Lincoln Lancaster County, Nebraska, 68516, United States of America, Planet Earth. I'm one of the owners. Erectile malfunction. If I have time, I'll come back to that one. I voted today, and it seems, depending on your radio or TV station of choice, I denied, even frustrated, the diabolical plans and intentions of the Affordable Care Act, or the Democrats, or Republicans, or independents, or the undocumented, or Alexander the Great, or European-style socialism, or ISS, or grandmothers, or kitten lovers. There will be a new complexion on many boards, bodies, commissions, and/or councils, including the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. I suspect new faces do not guarantee a new thinking or new direction. Alas, more of the same will probably be the new thinking or new direction. By my calculations, I have voted in every election that has come my way since my first ballot, 1968 Nixon v. Humphrey. Some young'uns among us do not remember a time when a minimum age to vote was universally 21, but today is constitutionally 18. Some of you are on my ballot, some were not. Some of you I voted for, and some I did not. I have experienced some winners and a lot of losers. In a republic or democracy, I accept that sometimes the other guy wins. I do not like it. I accept it. I suspect many or most here present have already or will vote. Some of you have a vested interest in the outcome. Some of you have addition for a new job. I suspect regardless of who prevails or who does not, the sun will still rise in the east and set in the west, and the republic will stand. Often it seems my ballot has candidates unopposed. I think this is inherently unhealthy for a democracy. This reminds me of other governing systems, a single party that boasts elections, often with higher participation. Often on my ballot with an oval and an empty line, I will write in a name, sometimes a son, often a grandchild. John Gale estimates or predicts 50% of those eligible will vote statewide. Shively estimates or predicts some less in Lancaster County. And in a republic, it is 50% of the ballots properly cast and tabulated plus one that wins. I've stated one or more times my opinion of taxes, an essential obligation of citizenship. I feel that same about voting, but here's the difference. If I do not pay my taxes, for whatever reason, government will punish me. If I do not vote, for whatever reason, I will punish myself. As an election approaches, money captures airtime. This necessarily drives out some advertisers. And so we hear less about erectile malfunction and more about candidate X or Y or Z. But afterwards, admin will recapture airtime. So we return to the standard fare, mainly pharmaceuticals. Each one claims to be the salvation and solution for whatever ails you. So next election, sit back and enjoy the ads. You will be bombarded more by personalities and bombarded less by male insufficiencies.
Gary, thank you for your commendable voting record. I was an exchange student behind the iron curtain in 1962, and my host family couldn't vote. And it's, that's always bothered me, as so many people in America don't vote.
When I tell people I vote playfully, I sometimes say, "It's my way of getting even with politicians."
Okay, for whatever reason, we're glad you voted. Will you move on to announcements, Mr. Clerk?
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, November 6, 2014, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a meeting on Tuesday, November 11, 2014 due to Veterans Day. Their next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 18, 2014, at 10:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesday and Saturday on Five City TV, Cable Channel 5. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster NE.gov under Five City TV, Video on Demand, or Five City TV on YouTube.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Adjourn the Regger County Board meeting and open the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, November 4. Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda, please?
A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Also in attendance this morning is Scott Gaines from the County Assessor's Office. Agenda item one, our minutes. Approve of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, October 28, 2014.
Move approval?
Second.
Are there additions or corrections? Seeing none, call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is public comment, and I would wish to make a public comment.
Please take the microphone, Mr. Clerk.
Deputy Clerk, sit in.
And I think Cory might be joining you.
I'd like to join me, Angela.
It's not very often, maybe this is the only time. Well, no, I think you did get an exceptional service.
Well, as you know, this is Angela's last meeting. She's moving on to the county engineer's office next week. And just wanted to thank her for the five and a half years of service she's given the clerk's office, the county board, and the county. She's tremendous job. We're going to miss her greatly. And there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that Angela just takes care of that nobody knows about. Last minute things that pop up on the agenda. You know, I'm ready to get out of office at 4:30 on Friday, but if something comes in, Angela's there till 5:00 or 5:30. Come on, let's go, you know. Oftentimes, on special events permits and so forth, they don't come in in a timely fashion. And she gets that through the system so that there's no glitch in holding up events. And there's things like that that just, that go on that we really appreciate it. I mean, she goes above and beyond, so thanks for all your help, so.
I would just also too like to echo Dan's statements and thank Angela, you know, for being such a dedicated, hard-working, professional employee. There's so many behind-the-scenes things. I'm sure you guys maybe know of some of them, and Dan just mentioned some. But just Angela is just so proactive and very customer service-oriented, and we're going to miss you. Big shoes to fill. We're so spoiled. But good luck. Very, your new position, I wish you all the best. I think you're going to do great, very deserving.
Commissioner Shore?
Well, you know, I get to see the back of your head every single Tuesday. And I'm, makes me happy to know that you are the face for so many of our constituents for county government. They are what you see, so your enthusiasm and your smile and your energy is what they take away. So thank you for being that positive face of county government. And the only good thing about seeing you go is knowing that you're staying with Lancaster County and that Pam Dingman and the other employees of the county engineer's office will benefit from all your skills and talents and abilities.
Commissioner Amundson?
Well, I was going to mention that, you know, Dan, you're losing a really valuable employee. But I tell you what, Pam Dingman is just really excited, okay? You're going to be a great asset there, and just really move that organization along too. Thank you.
Commissioner Smoyer?
Just want to thank you for putting up with us. I know the clerk's office, all three of you know this very well, but you know, kind of putting up with the shenanigans with meetings and when we're trying to set them, what we're trying to do and everything. It means a lot, so thank you for putting up with us and not taking it out on us with a baseball bat or something.
Well, I'd like to echo those sentiments, and sometimes we need a baseball bat taking test, particularly me. There's always a big, big stack of papers, and inadvertently, I'll miss one or two. And Angela is so nice about it, she'll come chase me down in the county commissioner's offices or give me a call to stop in. And your attention to detail is just phenomenal. And the way that you go about it, you don't get rattled, you just get the job done. And for that, we thank you, and let's give her a big hand for your service. And make a few comments, if you would. Yeah, tell us what we're doing wrong or what we can do better.
Yeah, five minutes, we're setting the timer.
I was just going to say thank you for all the kind words. I have really enjoyed working with everyone in my office and you guys, and I'm going to miss that very, very much. But I just remind myself, I'm not going to be too far away still with the county, so I'll have to pop in once in a while for a visit.
That would be great.
You'll always be welcome. Thank you again so much. Anyone else? Well, please come up the microphone before you start.
Have to do with the Board of Equalization issue? Okay.
No.
Quorum is a majority.
Three.
Majority, okay, because I don't see five.
We need three to conduct this.
Yeah, at least three.
Okay. And then, because the Equalization Board is what sends me the letter about my protest. I never got one. So I'd like for somebody somewhere to figure out what happened with my protest.
Did you give them a current address, and has it been current?
Oh, honey, we've lived there forever.
Okay, well, you might check with the office and the assessor's office.
And I was in the hospital, so we don't know if something happened. So I just, I come to her. Is that who I?
I would go across the hall and the doors there into the assessor's office and check with them, make sure everything's right.
It's a property protest?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can help you with that. Why don't you come see me when you're done?
And who are you?
I'm Cory, I'm with the county clerk's office.
And I'm Terry Pope Gonzalez.
Okay, now you're Dan? Is that what I heard him call you? Is that the name I saw somewhere, Nolte? Okay. Because I don't want to just call you the clerk. Well, I want to give you the respect. If I'm going to come, you know, let's all be respectful. Because, you know, sometimes I get too mad and I don't be, and so I'm trying to be. So, yes. And yes, and I would only do the rules, okay, when it says about, you know. And I had got after him, so I needed him to know why I got after him. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and this is my Dan.
Well, then you better give it back.
Mr. Chair, move we adjourn?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Smoyer?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Carries four to zero.